Good evening, everyone. We're going to switch things around on the agenda for a little bit. Let's do a proper call to order and then kind of come back if we're joined by Police Officer Johnson and we'll go from there. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start out with Treasurer Rich Brancato with the treasurer, this month's treasurer report. Thank you.
Yeah, there's really nothing remarkable this month. We're about a third of the way through the year. We are a third of the way through the year. We've spent 28% of our budgeted operating expenses and we received about 24% of our revenue. Todd brought to my attention one thing which was interesting. We get a state, a grant from state for state aid for police protection.
Yes.
I don't know if you don't, okay. So it covers some of our, the cost of some of our off-duty Montgomery County Police. And they made an internal error in their, in their keeping. They were charging us for, or they were giving us money for, Todd, how many? 16?
They were reimbursing us based on 16. The reports, 16 part-time officers and the full-time equivalency was three. And they were using 16.
They were using 16.
Oh, my gosh.
So they, they, they gave us about $100,000 too much. And over the last, I don't know what the last.
Over the last four years.
Four years. And, but they're, they're not going to attempt to claw it back, but thank goodness. But that's, that's why our, the revenue doesn't show a lot of money for that this year or this month because we shouldn't have been getting it to begin with.
So will there be an adjustment going forward to reflect?
They're not doing anything. They're not doing anything. I guess we will amend our budget to show it appropriately, but they're not, they're not going to try to claw it back. So that's good news.
Interesting.
Good news.
Wow.
Yeah, we were getting around $50,000, I believe. It's close to 50 the last four years or so. And I think it's going to go to about less than half of that. About 20 or so, based on the full-time equivalency. For some reason internally, they, they always kept taking the 16 number and not three, even though we reported it correctly. First year we got SAP money was, it was around 20, actually. They must have had a turnover in staff or somebody didn't know how to do the calculations because we continuously reported full-time, three full-time equivalent officers, but whoever was doing the calculations used their 16 part-time to calculate our, our grant. So it'll go to about 20,000 a year versus 47 or so thousand a year. We don't really need to amend the budget in that respect to anticipate lower revenue in that line item. It'll just be reflected in our, in our audit and in the end of year financials.
Yeah, I meant, I meant our coming budgets, not this year's budget.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, yeah, absolutely. We'll reflect the, the new reality and, and you're right, in starting in FY '26 budget. Yep.
Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions at all for Rich? Okay, thanks a lot.
One quick, when, when we do get the check later this month for the reimbursement and the first estimated payment for this year, do you send that around? That's, that's a big deal. That actually defines.
Send what? What are you, I'm not sure.
Later, later this month, later in November, we will receive the check. The big, big. For the reimbursement for last, last, the last of the reimbursements for the last fiscal year and first estimated payment for this year. And that literally allows us to define our revenue stream and just be nice to send that around when you get that information. Thank you.
I'll get that. I'll send it around, everyone. It's the income tax distribution for November, Rich.
Oh, I thought you were still on this.
I may have been treasurer, but I'm not that adult to think that that payment is going to constitute our budget.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Todd, whenever you're ready to, for the manager's report.
Sure. I just, over the past month, staff has assisted with several key projects. I will read the staff report verbatim to you. We've assisted with the Bethesda Market Park Development Project, analyzing and publicizing the county's proposed attainable housing strategies initiative, addressing proposed clarifications to state law concerning municipal regulatory authority. We've also collaborated with several state and, and line agencies, state and county agencies on fencing and barrier improvements along the Capitol Crescent Trail adjacent to, adjacent to the town. As staff has also continued overgrown vegetation enforcement and Zimmerman Park improvements. And we've prepared for the fall tree planting and improvements to the East and Leland intersection. That is a synopsis of, of staff activities of the last month. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So what does the Zimmerman Park timeline look like right now in terms of completion?
Yeah, contractor actually started putting concrete down on the walkway today. There are landscape contractors scheduled to start putting the flagstone on the week after Thanksgiving, so the week after next. That'll probably take up two weeks. And they'll install the furnishings and the sod and remulch the park as part of that effort, which will sort of close out the first
Yep.
phase. We'll probably keep it closed to traffic until the sod gets established, you know, for a couple of weeks after that, and then we can open it up.
After the holidays.
Probably after the holidays. And then we'll start looking at fencing and landscaping and some other tidy up improvements at the end.
So phase one will include the bumping out and the completion of the path to the crosswalk.
Correct.
Okay, good, okay. The other thing, I guess I might mention is that thanks to Dave, he's reminded me that we need to work on a plaque to honor Scott Fosler. So I'm working with some residents to come up with some suggested language, which I hope I'm ready to distribute over the next week or two. And I've asked the town to look into what's the process of finding, you know, a way to mount that and also the timeframe it would take and the cost if we want to do it in a nice bronze plaque. So we're looking into that now.
Thank you. Thank you. There was another question I had. This is what happens when you don't write something down. It was just around when you were talking about Zimmerman Park and it was just before then. Oh, how is overgrown vegetation? How, how much of the, the town has been like kind of combed through at this point? And how's it going in general?
So we've done zone one and zone two. We're, we're about to go, we've gone out with, we've seen a lot of compliance, in fact, based on the letters we sent out. First, as you recall, is the general letter asking people to comply within 30 days. And, and then we sent a targeted letter, which have, have been sent to zone one at this point, and general letters have been sent to zone two. The Tolbert and John have gone around in zone one and looked at the compliance level or after the, after the targeted letter was, was sent. Targeted letters are only go to those who haven't complied based on the initial general letter. And have found about 10 residences where some, some minor pruning needs to occur, nothing major, but right now and immediately prior to Thanksgiving, next week, we are going to be concentrating some public plantings along 46. And then we're going to get to the targeted prunings after Thanksgiving in zone one. We will then, John and Tolbert will then go around and look at zone two to see, to determine compliance with the general letter. And we'll then send out targeted letters to those who haven't complied with that initial 30 days. And then ultimately go around and see what, what, what remediation, our pruning work needs to occur. And we'll oversee our contractor in that effort. So we're seeing good compliance, good voluntary compliance. I don't think there's a lot we're going to have to do to significantly, at least in, you know, zone one and I don't know about zone two yet. But we've seen some significant compliance. And so there are only a few holdouts that we'll have to handhold or otherwise do the work for them in order to bring the sidewalks into ADA compliance.
I like the fact that we went this route with the ADA because it's so easy to be able to communicate this. And I'm so happy to hear that, that people are generally understanding the standard and accepting it. At this pace though, and given that, you know, winter weather might be upon us in the next month and a half or something, how long do you expect that this project will take until the whole town is done?
We've always said about a year.
Okay.
Probably about a year. We'll probably just continue it after zone two for the winter and then restart in, in the spring or late, or, or late winter. A lot of vegetation kind of dies out in the winter, especially if it's deciduous. And we're not going to have a really good indication at that point of what's blocking the sidewalk or not, except for evergreens, of course, and non-deciduous type shrubs and trees and bushes. So my guess is we'll finish zone two and then restart with zone three, potentially in late winter, early spring.
And there's six zones? How many zones are there total?
Six, I believe there are six, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions for Todd? Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm not sure. We can't necessarily do public comments because we're ahead a bit and we can't go into council discussions because technically there are people who are interested in these other topics. So I think we're a little bit in wait, we can't do the variance. So kind of in wait, wait mode. Yeah, we take a five-minute break and hopefully Officer Johnson will, will come over and could pick it up from there. Yeah. All right. Thanks, everyone. Just for, for those who have just joined us, there was a little bit of mix-up in the agenda. So we started out with the financial report and the town manager's report. We're now at public comments. So if anyone online or here in the room would like to make a comment, this would be outside the public hearing that is going to take place in a few minutes on the retaining wall setback. But if there are any other general public comments that anyone would like to make, the floor is yours. Please announce yourself. Okay, I am not seeing any hands. So we will move forward. Do we have everyone for the variants?
Yes. I'm Andrew Sebastian. Hello.
Hi, Andrew. Great. So, because Ron is not going to be for this part of, you're shaking your head. Okay, great. So a pleasure to meet you, Mr. Sebastian. Just, yeah, if you'd like to turn on your camera, that would be helpful so that we can.
Let's see if I can figure that out. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And I believe you're representing your client.
Correct. Meredith and Dave Ficka. That's right.
Excellent. Great. Just to let you know, we have received materials about this variance. And everyone here on the town council has had an opportunity to read them. You're very welcome to present a short summary of any either new information or, or something else, just for the record. And then what will happen is we'll ask any questions if, if we do have any. There'll be an opportunity for the public to also comment and ask questions and comment. There'll be an opportunity for, for you to answer and, you know, kind of rebut, if you will, if there's any particular situation that's come up. I believe that when the town council then close, I close the commentary period, then we make, we have our discussion, make a vote, make a decision, and then about 10 days afterwards or within 10 days or something, until the variance is actually sent to them, it's not considered formal or valid until that point. So it's not as if tomorrow construction can start, if you will. So just letting you know, and did I miss Dave or Todd any instructions on, I'm saying this on behalf of our town attorney, who is going to review this recording later. So he'll let me know if I skipped a step along the way and keep me honest. But go ahead if you'd like to. Again, we've read everything, but if you'd just like to give a short summary for the record, that would be, thank you.
Sure. So we have at Meredith and Dave Ficka's residence, a failing brick retaining wall that has basically become too short over the years because of the accumulation of, and of just organic matter from the neighbor's yard. So now the wall is, needs to be rebuilt and there's a portion of it, about 25 linear feet of it that needs to be built 10 inches higher than it is now. We propose to rebuild the wall exactly where it is. It just raising it 10 inches for a distance of 25 feet from the garage forward towards the street in order to maintain the, the grade that we need to retain coming from the neighbor's side. That is the synopsis. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Do my colleagues have any questions at all? Okay, great. I'll open it up to the public if there are any questions, folks on the line or in the room here. Okay, I'm not hearing any questions. Okay. Suppose the public commentary period is closed. So we'll open this up for any discussion or comments. Of course, a motion as well as, as possible.
I have a question for staff and just wanted to ask, is there any reason for the rule that is currently in place that requires them to obtain a variance for the height of the wall for adding? Or is it just, do we have to have a standard and that's what the standard is?
Yeah, I guess the, there's a code provision that requires the two-foot setback from rear inside property lines, sort of as a protective measure for the neighboring properties. The code allows for non-conforming retaining walls to be replaced in the same location if the dimensions aren't changed. And so the fact that the height is increasing is what triggered the, the variance request, but there's not a specific reason other than if the height is changing, you know, it might be an opportunity for the council to look at it and require it to be moved in some cases to meet the required setback.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance. Second, second.
All those in favor? Hi, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. This was a relatively easy one for us because of just the land topography. I live up the street and know very much what is happening with respect to the landslide. I do want to make up just a personal thing, you know, congratulations to Mrs. Ficka, your son, Christian. I was at the basketball game on Saturday. Saw that Christian was awarded Georgetown University Student Athlete of the Year. Congratulate you all.
His dad is here too, so. That's very, that's very nice.
Double congratulations and enjoy the new wall.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. No, it'll be, it'll be a great improvement to our, to our driveway for sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Take care. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. All right. So, um, Todd, have we been able to connect with Officer Johnson? If not, I'm happy to move on.
Well, let's, let's move on for now. I'm trying to get him on the phone.
Okay. No worries. I just wanted to do that double check before we proceed with council discussions. The next topic is the screening of the Capitol Crescent Trail fencing and barrier. So for benefit of our colleagues Barney and I, Todd Barney and I have been talking consistently for, now, as you know, this started, these discussions started a year ago to better provide a screening for those residents who live along Elm Street and just assess what the situation is. So there's different stakeholders at play. There's the, the Purple Line Transit Partners. There's the county who's going to be maintaining the Capitol Crescent Surface Trail, the walking path, all of that, and then the town in terms of just balancing all of that. There has been a meeting with some Elm Street residents who are more so on the western part of this trail. So the ones closer to Elm Street Park, if you will, because the, the, the first part of the walking trail and the pedestrian bridge is like right on top of them to just figure out what opportunities there might be because the original, the estimate that we finally received was far, far higher than what we anticipated. Barney and I will be meeting with all the residents that are available on Saturday here at 10:00 a.m. to talk through again the quotes, talk about different opportunities where perhaps there could be some better use of vegetative screening that might offer a bit more in terms of privacy as well as potentially security. That is something that some residents are feeling might, might be a good way of approaching this, considering the very high cost associated. So we're still a little bit of limbo as to understanding if we were to adjust the scope, what that price would be because alternatively, it should, like the rest of the costs should be able to go down accordingly in terms of design and implementation costs like that. However, we haven't gotten that final word. It's been very, very required a lot of patience to be able to get this better understanding. That being said, we understand that our deadline is still December 15th. So the idea is if we're able to work with different residents, get this quote, we might be able to still hold a public hearing at our next town council meeting in December and still meet the deadline. But again, everything is a little working around. Good news is that the county did come back and they are, they are not going to be charging the town in terms of maintenance costs, which is something that was done in terms of the noise wall, the kind of upfront net present value of the maintenance costs, what was put into the initial amount for increasing the wall height a couple of years ago, that change order. But they're not going to do that this time. So we have that in writing. And we've also just had in our back pocket what the cost would be if there was an opportunity to put in some more evergreen screening that is kind of outside what is our current list of, of tree species. But because of this specific situation at play, we might have something that allows difference. Yeah, yeah. That isn't on our list right now, but something that could provide some fast-growing, good, good vegetative screening. So apologize, I don't know if that overtook additional comments that you wanted to make as well. Yeah, so.
That was a perfectly good summary.
Thanks.
I think we just don't really know until we meet with all the other residents, what their comfort level will be. And the, the issue of sort of what provides the best assurance for screening and some have been a little concerned of, well, I might put plant things in my backyard, but what if my neighbors don't? And so there's some discussion we have to have with everybody. But in any event, we hope we can come back and make a recommendation next week.
Yeah. Fingers crossed. Good. So are there any thoughts, concerns, questions about that in terms of the process and all that good stuff?
So what's the timing and how would that fit in with the rest of the Purple Line construction?
Timing for, for installation?
Installation?
Yeah. Um, yeah, my, my understanding is that, oh gosh, that's a good question. Maybe it wouldn't be until one of the last steps. Because the, not the last steps, I'm sorry. They're planning on opening the trail a year, maybe a year before. So before opening the trail, it would be up, but I don't have any idea of exact timing on it.
So I'll hazard a guess on it that the different components, first, the additional screening that we might be offering is something that we'd encourage be planted as quickly as possible. Arbor vide can grow four, six, four feet a year. So clearly planning, you know, this winter, the spring of 2025 would mean it could be six or eight feet taller by the time that people are actually on the path. But the terms of the fencing, you may have observed that, that they are beginning to put in the stanchions for the, the clear fencing along the bridge. They've already put those in. So I think my, my surmise is that they'll probably be ready to put in the fencing pretty soon, sometime over the winter into the spring. Again, that's speculative, but and they also plan to finish the remaining walkway down to, on, to Pearl Street sometime over the next couple of months. So I think the, the, that may actually move relatively quickly. But to the point about when the trail will be open, they still anticipate using most of 2025 and most of 2026 to complete construction of the whole Purple Line. And then sometime toward the back end of 2026, they will start testing. And that testing will proceed all the way until December of 2027. They don't anticipate opening the commercial line for a commercial purpose till then. And to anyone who might have wondered why it would take so long to do that amount of testing, I did raise that question at the fun fair this past weekend when Carla Julian was here, pardon me. And she said that she, she didn't, couldn't really give me a comprehensive answer either, but said that the main problem is the tremendous degree of software that's required for the interconnection of the running of the, of the line with all the traffic signalization through all the parts of the county where there's, they're crossing roads and intersections. And that that takes a lot of time and a lot of work to make that safe. So that, she said, that's, that's, she's, I'm sure that's not all the answer, but that's certainly a good portion of the answer. But as Irene said, it has been our long request on our part that as soon as the construction is complete, they actually open the trail. There's no reason the trail shouldn't be open. So if that were the case, then the trail could be open sometime in 2026. And then we've also put on the table a further request that whenever the bridge and the fencing is completed, they could open up that with people exiting onto Pearl Street even before the Capitol Crescent Trail for the rest of the distance is open. Why not allow people to go back and forth using the pedestrian bridge? So we had raised that many months ago, but when we then got caught up in the fencing, we decided that first things first, let's make sure we bear down and make, get the fencing. So that's what we focused on. But if the fencing issue is cleared up, if the schedule is known, that is another issue, another point we would still like to raise is reopening, opening up the bridge even sooner than the trail. So that's rough sense of.
The first is this quote, second is opening up this pedestrian bridge, and third is the horn and bell issue, which is the placement of this horn. Exactly where would it be in the tunnel entrance or would it, you know, hopefully be, be moved elsewhere? That is a whole long saga that still needs to be addressed and, but we're kind of waiting one thing at a time. So, yeah. Great. Any other questions or points? Okay. So I suppose what we're all hoping that we can get this in line and set up. I believe we only need to give six days' notice for a public hearing. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're, you know, we'll, we'll, we're getting on that. We might, if we still have this 15th deadline, might, I'm just asking everyone to be patient so that we can try and get this through. We might end up having a separate public hearing if, hopefully not though. Hopefully it'll all come together. Okay. If there isn't anything else, we can move on to the next part. So the Land Use Committee has proposed some amendments in collaboration with Ron on our town building code. And, and this is a lot of cleanup work. If you, you saw in your, and I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Rich. That's how I read it. You know, mostly it was a lot of cleanup stuff. So, but please go ahead.
Yeah, we, we asked them, we asked the Land Use Committee to kind of take a look at the buildings part of this to do, to, to clean it up, number one, but to essentially take into account moving from any definition of a, of a single family unit to something that encompasses all buildings. And we were doing it in anticipation of something not necessarily have, having to happen on the, the housing initiatives that are pending in the state and county. pending in the state and county. But uh just to make it clear that um, we're not taught, we're talking about buildings in the town rather than just single family residential units. So they they we did went, Deedon and the committee went through that. Uh, we've had a couple sessions with Ron to conform our 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 views. And what you had in front of you is the is the recommended changes. We had a subsequent meeting last week with Ron. We've got a few more minor things that they can work through in terms of translating these things to the ordinance. Um, but they're nothing significant. So um that's that's the substance of it.
Um, yeah, even with accessory dwelling units, it's it I thought this was a good change uh in general. So are you saying that the the ordinance that's in this packet, there still is going to be some further updates?
We we would like to get your feelings for the recommendations and then Deedon and Ron and I will work together to make sure that the ordinance clearly follows that. So we can then propose the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
And then and then pass, you know, is
Okay.
Another set. So this is
Just the initial.
Your guys to feel to tell us whether or not you agree with the the recommended changes and then and then Deedon and Ron will work to perfect it.
Yeah, good, good, yeah.
So just to make clear, so when I read the actual drafted ordinance, I only saw a portion of the recommendations included.
Correct.
And and you're mostly focusing on having handling multifamily housing. But you will go back and amend to to expand that basically to pick up other recommendations that were not included.
Right. And there were a couple of things that we discussed where there are more. I I call them semantic than more than anything else that will that will clean up.
Wordsmithing.
Put wordsmithing in the ordinance, yeah. But we wanted to get your thoughts on the on the proposal and so we can move forward to actually perfect the ordinance and get it in front of the council for consideration.
Okay. Good. Um, and any thoughts or questions? I I personally think this is a a good idea. I like the the forward thinking of it. I like the holistic approach to it. Um, again, I think this is this is cleanup and as far as we can go until we understand better what's going to happen at at a county level. Um, and uh so I I I see nothing but goodness. Is the is the idea to come back in December with this? Or do you think you'll need longer? Because it's only a couple of weeks from now, given the holiday.
Deedon, what do you think? Can we clean it up?
So you're basically approving the substance of the building, the changes and the
Recommendation.
The right, the proposed recommend.
Agent, if you please, you have to come to the
Here if you want.
Microphone.
Yes, what what I want, what I want them.
Right. I guess that's going to kind of depend on Ron because we we he did not address the building code changes that we put put into the memo that we sent to the council. He addressed our comments on sort of code changes related to the possibility of making our code more generally.
Understood.
And and that's what the ordinance includes.
Yeah.
Um, so the other things are are building code changes that address issues that that Dave brought up that we could work on quickly last fall. There were some others that we haven't touched, but I I would think that, you know, if we hand this over to Ron, he could, he could probably get the ordinance, those things added to the ordinance. When is your December meeting?
December eleventh?
Well, we we just ask him. He thinks he can, if he can do it. He wanted us to, you know, when we talked to him the other day, we were just saying we should get approval from you that we didn't want him drafting code that you were opposed to. You know, if you didn't want to make a particular change, there's no need to draft code for it.
Makes total sense. Yeah, makes total sense. Um, yeah, so potentially it could be uh December, but
Yeah.
It might be January that we we introduce this.
Right. I mean, we're fine with everything he did.
Yeah, and I I the only urgency from my standpoint is is that a lot of the 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 language in the state and the county thing, I think at least Ron feels that um if we have the if we have the ordinances cleaned up before those
Yeah.
changes take place.
Absolutely.
That would carry more weight and if we ever had to take it to court in terms of being sure, sure.
I agree.
So I think we definitely want to have this in December.
Yeah, we would, I'd like to get it on ours.
And and most of what we propose is it's pretty easy as, you know, some
Right.
Take add a word, take a phrase out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the the most complicated thing we did was rewording the purposes.
The most kind, the most time consuming in the committee was.
Oh, yeah, that was time consuming too.
It's always that.
But that was the most complicated thing we did. Everything else is, it would take, you know, five seconds to to implement.
Yeah. Okay, good. Uh, uh, so I I'll open this up, but um I'm I'm in agreement with the approach um about you all. Proceed, proceed, proceed. Okay, we'll direct Ron to um to proceed with the ordinance. Um, and hopefully get the ordinance introduced uh in December and have that public hearing in Ja- in January.
And just be clear to to also include in the ordinance, the other changes that have been recommended to make it more comprehensive.
Okay. Great.
Could I just add one in in the land use committee was going through all of these different items. Uh, established building line, growth floor areas, or is there anything porch, athletic court? Is there anything in particular that you want to raise to us to our attention in this?
I don't think so. As I said, it's not just focused on single family residences, it's not wrong.
Which is a good thing to do, right? Just explain to me that the first item here, the established building line. Modify the definition and make it clear that accessory buildings are not used for this calculation. Just help me understand that. Accessory building, I'm just. Right.
You know, that's not, that's not going to encounter with this.
For the setback requirement.
Right.
So it was really meant to.
Building right now, it that could be the main building, which is a house, or it could include an accessory building.
And the point is to only include.
They've asked us to clean up.
The 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 concept is to include only the main building as being caught up in that setback. Got it. Okay. Obviously not a garage or something that would be.
Exactly.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we we just asked Ron to go forward.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that Barney is still.
Yeah, I just, because I had read the ordinance and I didn't know where the status of the other recommendations, I had not spent as much time on all those. So I just want to make sure that I see I see it. And there are good purposes, by the way. I thought that was very helpful.
You liked our revisions. I mean, we were trying to.
Important. It's important for the reason that you said.
Well, yeah, I mean, we tried to add more environmental stuff and and also, you know, they apply more generally than just to section four point three. So.
Right.
I thought that was important.
And then you want to make clear that that the basically rules we have for streets also apply to alleys.
Yes. Yes.
Right.
That was another Dave request. Snowplows, et cetera.
Good.
All right. Excellent.
That was easy.
Thank you. Do you know, thank you, uh, Deedon and and the committee and 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 Rich and uh Dave as well, just, you know, chiming in on all this. I I think this was overdue, but but well, necessary and um I love it. Love it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, so I understand Officer Johnson is on the line. Um, thank you for for joining us this evening and and if you're able or would like, uh, you can turn on your your video as well. Um, we uh asked uh for kind of a briefing about crime uh in 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 general, what's going on in in uh from a town perspective, Bethesda area perspective. And then um as there's been uh a couple of incidents, you know, what is it from a community notification standpoint? What's allowable? What it is, what is it that residents can do from proactive sense? Uh, so that we stay safe and and are helpful um during during certain situations who are not in the way. So I'll open it up to you, Officer Johnson. Thank you for your time. I know that you're very busy and we really, really do appreciate you uh coming to this meeting tonight.
Okay, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Not really. It's a bit muffled. Um, so I I can't hear too well.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, it's much better. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm having some technical difficulties. I'm I'm not able to get on the Zoom link, so I I'm calling in. Uh, so I apologize that you can't see me, but hopefully you can hear me. Uh, first, I want to say thank you and to Mr. Hoffman for inviting me and thank you all for having me. Um, I just a little bit about me, I've been on the police department since two thousand and ten. I started my career here um in the Wheaton District for three years. And then I left the Wheaton District and went to background and recruitment for uh five years. I spent a short stint in S I D for about three or four months. And then I went to the Silver Spring District for two years um during the pandemic from eighteen to two thousand and twenty. And then I've been here in the second district of Bethesda since two uh July of twenty twenty. And I've currently been in the position of community services for uh just about two years now. So I am happy to be here. I'm thrilled to be here. Um, Todd told me that you had some concerns um about uh the incident that happened with the uh stolen car that came through your neighborhood or came in that area. And uh those subjects were apprehended, but for the safety standpoint of the community, whenever there's something going on like that where we have an active event going on, we ask all the residents to um just stay inside. Um, if there's something where it's going to be something very serious that we need you all to shelter in place, um, there'll definitely be notifications made by the officers on scene uh to make that notification to you. Though and every effort that we can to ensure everyone's safety. Um, we're thankful that on that particular night, we had an off-duty officer that actually spotted the vehicle that was stolen um and began to follow it uh covertly and then give once the um the vehicle was followed close enough and other units were available to assist, they were able to uh pursue this particular vehicle um even after there were uh some subjects that bailed out and was able to uh apprehend all of them. So we're thankful for that. What we don't want to have happen with the residents is to have them come out of their homes to peek and see exactly what's going on because the unknown could admit could have been one of those subjects that could have been in the area hiding in your backyard or trying to seek refuge in your home. Um, if you open that door and it just so happens that they're there. So we don't want to have anyone do that. As far as the alerts that would occur, um, we don't typically send out alerts to the individual neighborhoods uh from the police department in regards to something like that. That would be officers that are on scene who would be have given instruction to uh knock on the doors of everyone um to let them know that they needed them to lock their doors or whatever the case may be while a search would be continued if this was something to occur in your neighborhood. We also have what's called Alert Montgomery, which is not run through the police department. That's run through the county government to give different alerts about traffic. And I believe in some cases, it will give alerts for different events that happen like this. Um, I did provide Mr. Hoffman with some pamphlets for you all to give to the community on Alert Montgomery. Um, were you able to receive those?
I am not on Alert Montgomery.
Uh, Officer Johnson's talking about the pamphlets he sent and they've been provided uh the one with respect to carjacking has been provided uh Alert Montgomery we received as well.
Sorry, I misunderstood. Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that particular, those particular pamphlets will give um information on both of those particular things. And it it will be good to want to sign up for Alert Montgomery um so that you can get some of these alerts that occur uh for for holiday safety. One of the things about holiday safety is if you're going to be ordering packages from Amazon um with a close knit community that I believe you all have, if you have neighbors and they're and some of your neighbors are out of town, we ask that they be in coordination with you all or conversation with you all or one another to pick up the packages for the neighbor if they're not there, because we don't want to make it seem like no one's home and packages are are building up. We do have porch pirates that come around through different neighborhoods and may uh tend to steal packages during this time of year. And typically after October the thirty first, the crime rate goes up um for different crimes. However, no need to panic because I I what I do know is that out of the districts that we have in Montgomery County, uh, the second district is one of the safest districts that we have in the um in the entire county. Uh, crime has gone up in different areas regionally um and nationally. So uh I don't want you to be uh shocked or uh amazed that the crime, some you may see more crime than you used to. It's just not the same as it used to be. It's not the same Bethesda it used to be. It's not the same Chevy Chase that it used to be. Um, we have less officers than we did before, but we're still able to handle every call that is dispatched to us either by phone or by responding to that particular victim uh to take a report from them or to find out exactly what's going on and mitigate that call the uh the proper way. So when it comes down to this particular time of year, we have Thanksgiving, we have the holiday shopping, we have Christmas and we have New Year's and it's getting darker earlier. So what we're asking is to make sure that you check your your shrubbery around your homes to trim it back away from your light and should it trim it back from the walking path. Uh, make sure you have the lighting and um enough ambient lighting outside of your home and make sure that it's working properly. So that it gives the indication that someone's there and that you care. And there's nothing wrong with lighting up your neighborhood. One thing that's for sure is if you don't have lights on, you can have a potential criminal that could be looking in your home if you if you don't have window coverings. And they they can see inside your home, but you can't see them. So what you want to do is put that light on them so that it illuminates the outside so that you can see exactly what's going on in your surroundings. Uh, uh, senior scams, scams with the emails, scams with the IRS, scams with the social security, uh scams that come out with U S Customs and also the ones that come out with um the UPS when they're saying you have a package that was undeliverable and we need to you to get in touch with us to give us certain information so that this package can be delivered to you. That's a scam. Social Security scam. We've made changes to your um social security and we believe that you're eligible for more money per month. And they will call you and say that they're agents. Social Security would never call you. The IRS would never call you. So if you get those calls, you automatically know you can hang up those phone calls. Um, there's also another one called the grandparent scam where um someone will call and they'll say that they have your grandchild and they may have the correct name, because if you go on Google, a lot of times with Google, what it does is it shows you, if you're looking for yourself, and it'll show people who are potentially related to you and addresses that you may have used in the past as well as phone numbers. And what they do is search those particular databases and they go through these different things to get that information. And what they'll do is call you and say that they're holding your grandchild hostage. And if you don't give them a certain amount of money, or if you don't go buy these gift cards, they're going to hurt them and they'll have these sounds in the background as if they're hitting someone or hurting someone. That's typically a scam too. So what happens in that case right there, if they do that, don't hang up the phone, call that particular person that they're saying they're holding hostage to see if that if this is something that's true and also call nine one one so that we can respond out. Um, I know I went through a couple of things rather quickly. Is there any questions you have or is there something specific other than what I've already covered that you want me to cover for you?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Barney.
Go ahead. Um, thank you very much, Officer Johnson. This is Barney Rush, Vice Mayor. Going back to the episode where uh the the car stolen and the cops came into the town and you guys did a great job in apprehending the the four uh people who were uh uh taking it. Um, and that that really did cause a lot of consternation and concern among families because we saw the helicopters and no one knew what was going on. And uh I believe I heard you say, and it's certainly very helpful to know, that that the police will go door to door in the vicinity and actually tell people to stay indoors if they believe that there is a risk and the people that people should not go outside. But I think the 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 question that and I wanted to ask is you know, that takes a lot of time, obviously, for the police to do that. Um, and and if you if the police are doing that, they're not necessarily, those those same policemen cannot also be going after the perpetrators. So meanwhile, separately, the town has um a system where we're able to be in email communication with most of our residents instantaneously. And so the question, at least in my mind, is would there ever be a time when the police would feel that there were a fair number of resident of families that could be affected but are in an area of concern and would really want an alert to be gotten out to all those families as quickly? and would really want an alert to be gotten out to all those families as quickly as possible? And would the police ever want to use as a channel of communication, uh, our town crier system to say, you know, this is the police, we're asking you to stay indoors? Uh, just to make sure that the word can get out as rapidly as possible to many more families than could possibly be reached in that period of time by two or three policemen going door to door. So I'm, I'm not looking for anything that the town itself takes on as a responsibility to do as such, but rather a situation where we have this channel, uh, that can reach a large number of residents very quickly. And is that a channel that would make sense for the police to use if they felt there was a serious enough concern that they really wanted residents to know that they should stay indoors and know it as quickly as possible?
Okay, so there are a couple of things and a couple of answers that I can give and a couple of answers I can't give because they're very much above my pay grade in terms of adding a system so that we can be able to use it to notify you all. That's something that would have to be taken up at a higher level. Uh, I'm not sure of any method that we have currently that is tapped into any one, uh, neighboring, uh, uh, neighborhood or jurisdiction where we can actually send something out to them to alert that the actual neighborhood of those particular things as they're going on. This is the, when these types of events happen, they're very fluid situations. And what's going to happen is there are going to be a number of officers that are going to be saturating that neighborhood, whether it be from just the second district or adjoining district or different units. So we would, we would be able to, uh, assign duties, which is what we do when we have an active scene, to officers to have them go and coordinate where they should go and what they should be doing. So we'll have that particular thing covered. However, when you have an active scene like that, there's not going to be, uh, something where, at this particular time that I know of, something where there's going to be an alert that's going to be sent out to that particular neighborhood. Uh, I think that's something that we can have for further conversation, um, at a higher level to figure out if that's something that can be incorporated with the police department, uh, because that's exactly what it would be. It would be something that will be going through, uh, the government to actually figure out how to do this and how to integrate this. I know that currently we are integrating the camera system with our real-time crime center. So that could be a possible way of doing something like that.
What kind of system, what kind of system are, are cameras?
That, that is something that where if you have a camera on your home and you go through our, uh, Moco Connect, then you can actually sign up to have your camera be utilized where footage can be, where we can feed right into your camera to see exactly what is going on in your neighborhood if there's a crime that's occurring while it's actively occurring.
Yes, Rich.
Yes, Officer, I, it's about that specific event again. I noticed that the, uh, that you use the Prince George's helicopter to assist in that. And it leads me to the question of we, recently the, uh, county council approved Tacoma Park and Bethesda to get drones. Do you know when the drone is actually going to be active in Bethesda?
I don't have a timeframe as of yet, um, or have that information to say exactly when that's going to be active in Bethesda. Um, that's something that I would have to talk to the commander about. And, um, the, uh, head of that particular unit, which is Commander Kokinos out of the, out of the third district, um, because he's the one that's in active pursuit of having these operations be, um, located in, in each year, each district that we have to be able to utilize for these purposes. As far as the helicopter for, from Prince George's County, what we'll do whenever we have an active event like that, that's fluid, um, in that type of event, what we'll do is ask for air support so that we can see because of the cover of the, um, the cover of night, um, and because it was a bailout. And what, whichever jurisdiction is able to provide that for us is the helicopter that we'll use.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm glad you did. I, I still think the, uh, the drone is supposed to be night capable as well. So I think that asset coming online soon would be very useful.
Yes, and I can't imagine it'll be too far off. I just don't have a date or a timeframe to give you.
Yeah. Could you check for us?
Uh, yes, I absolutely can.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Joy, did you?
Um, well, uh, thank you, Officer Johnson, for speaking with us today. Um, I really have a question for our staff related to, uh, lighting in our community. I am getting older, but it seems to me that the lights, uh, the, many of the streetlights are dimmer than I recall in the past. And I don't know if that's because few of them are working, but could you address the issue of just lighting on our streets? I know a couple of years ago, we talked about whether we could have control over our lights and I believe we don't yet have control over our lights. Um, but I do think that there are many parts of the town that, at least for my vision, is too dark, um, at night and it's a concern.
So you're asking the lumens level to, it, has there been an adjustment over previous years or is it our aging eyes? Okay, um, I don't know if, uh, Todd or Dave can, is, are they, I know that the, we've asked the, um, uh, police officers when they do see a light out to report that to the town and then, of course, that's taken care of. So, but what you're asking is, is slightly different. So do we know that the lumens level, um, when, when those bulbs are being replaced, is it the same?
It is. They're all, they're all standard streetlights, seventy watt H P S bulbs. I purchased sodium. They're being replaced in kind with the same wattage. Um, there is an effort underway, uh, right now. Uh, Barney and Rich are discussing it with, uh, John on staff, uh, to understand Pepco's future offerings for replacement fixtures, um, potentially, uh, you know, a full-scale replacement with L E D bulbs. Um, they won't necessarily at face value increase lighting per se. Uh, the town obviously has significant tree canopy cover, which affects the lighting, uh, which is usually above the tree canopy. And so there are multiple factors in play here, but, um, our bulbs are the same bulbs that are used in every residential neighborhood by Pepco, they're seventy watt H P S bulbs. Uh, we did a lighting and evaluation study a number of years ago. We have been identifying dark areas over the course of those years and installing fixtures where appropriate and on request. Um, however, there might be some difficulty or lack of need to add additional fixtures at this time because, uh, Pepco is out phasing, phasing out the A S seven H P S bulbs in their inventory. Uh, soon they'll be replaced with L E D fixtures, um, of the same general wattage. So nothing answers your question, but, um, that's this.
Yeah, Rich and I are having discussions and we hope to have more reported in another council meeting about, about this. But one, one comment I believe in, uh, is that the, uh, there is going to be a new, uh, light, lighting fixture added on Oak Ridge, which is going to be L E D at three thousand.
Lumens.
Uh, so, well, not the, but the, but the, it's also going to be whiter and not as yellow. Uh, and, and so there will be a chance to see what that's like. And we, we're, it'll be interesting to just get some reaction because some people may be concerned that
People might not like.
might not want that to be so white. But anyway, that would be an opportunity for you and others to sort of see what would it be like if we had the upgrade with that particular color as distinct from something that's closer to the current, which is a bit more yellow in tone.
Good question. Um, Officer, oh, sorry, was there anything else? Uh, Stephanie, was there any questions on here? Uh, Officer Johnson, you gave a number of, of, uh, comments, uh, slash tips, uh, and it reminded me that, so we, we send out a monthly newsletter, both electronically as well as, um, dropped at every, uh, doorstep, uh, that alternate, one month it's a climate environment tip, another month is a public services tip. And I wonder if what you provided, um, which was a, a wide variety of different ways to keep safe, if that is something that, um, either you or Montgomery County Police Department can put together that's, you know, kind of vetted and all that in terms of the language, that we might be able to parse out throughout the year, um, as kind of friendly reminders. Um, I have heard from Commander Dom about, uh, you know, for example, that, that although crime is not as high here in this district as in other areas, there is, um, fraud that, that you correctly pointed out then in kind of ways to protect yourself, right? Like the IRS is never going to call you, they're never going to, you know, whatever it's, they're going to send you five thousand letters if they're coming after you. Um, so, uh, and, and, you know, people calling and pretending to be, uh, members of their family, stuff like that. Is it possible that you could put those tips together, uh, in, in such a manner, um, that, that then we could parse it out and, and, um, sorry, uh, distribute to our residents?
Yes, that's something I can work with, um, with Mr. Hoffman on to get to you. I typically put these tips out on Nextdoor. So they are, they are posted out there, um, I usually do it. I post a lot of different things. I do post burglary tips as well, things about your car running, leaving your keys in your car running and all kinds of things like that. So there's definitely things that I can send to, uh, Mr. Hoffman for you all, um, to put out in your newsletter. Um, and these were typically things that I've already done in the past, so it wouldn't be, uh, it wouldn't be an issue at all.
Great, um, because I, I think in times like these, it's, our residents want to feel empowered to do something. Um, and when there is a lack of understanding or information, sometimes people fill in the blanks. Um, and in lieu of that, we want to be able to provide, uh, uh, tips and ideas that empower people if they're in a situation, so much like the pamphlet about the carjacking and all of that. That was, that was helpful for me to understand. Um, and I think more of those things, uh, to the, to the public. And I, for one, I'm not on social media. I'm not on any of that stuff on purpose. So, uh, if that's something that can be provided to us, um, because I can't be the only resident that's in this situation, right? That would be really helpful for us. So thanks, thanks in advance.
Uh, you're welcome. That's, that's not a problem at all. I'll, I'll send those things over to, uh, whether it be via pamphlet or whether it just be, um, about something that I've already written up before and sent out, uh, one way or another. Because I have information on scams, um, I have tips for, uh, uh, based on lighting and things of that nature. I have several different ones, locking your doors. Um, so there's a lot of different things that I have in terms of pamphlets, but I also have things that I put out, uh, on what to do in locking your, um, locking your homes up. Um, I do home security surveys, so there are a lot of, there, there are many things that I'll, I'll, I'll definitely be sending that way.
Yeah, and even in line with the, uh, counties, as you mentioned, the, the, the Ring Camera kind of subsidy type of program that's out there, just the incentive there to, um, to, to, uh, protect oneself.
Yeah, that's something that's been pushed out on Montgomery County's website, that Moco Connect. So, uh, I believe we, we've been pushing that on our website, uh, for the past two months now. Because that's something you actually have to go online and sign up for. That wouldn't be something, all the literature for that is there.
Right. I'm sorry, uh, there is a phone that need, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I just, uh, I guess I would want to some follow-up of my, my comment. Maybe we have to discuss it, but I, I really, I, I was concerned in this last episode that, that, um, the, the way for people to know they should stay in the home was for the policeman to walk house by house. And, and I am concerned that if we have a means using the, the means that the town has to communicate more rapidly with people to stay indoors, we should just look at if there's a way and, you know, I understand there are legal issues and everything else, but I really think we ought to look at if there's a way to make use of that to get the warning out very quickly. And I think, I heard you say Dr., uh, Dr., Dr. Johnson, Officer Johnson.
I'll take that, I'll take that.
Pay grade, which I, I respect, but that doesn't mean I want this to die. I really want to have a discussion on this point.
I, I do think, um,
So that, that would be something, is that, that is definitely something that would be at a level, um, with Commander Dom. So what I'll be doing is sending her an email, um, to talk about that and that, I'm sure that goes above her as well. Uh, but I will send the email to her to talk about that. Um, as of right now, the way that we have it, it is one of those things where if there's a, a safety risk to that particular area, then we will be going door to door, which would, what we would do in any situation and what we've always done. Um, if there's new technology or new matter that can be looked into, that's something that I'm sure that it can be taken into consideration. However, I wouldn't be able to make that decision.
I understand.
That's all I was saying about that.
Further discussion of it.
Honestly, I, I think, and this is a much broader issue that the Montgomery County Police need to figure out how to implement something, even if it is using Twitter so that you can follow the Twitter that applies to your district or whatever and set it for alerts or whatever. Um, other police departments do it. Almost every other police department I know of in the area does it. So I guess I'm a little unclear as to.
I just want to make sure, I, I was getting ready to say, when you say other departments do it, what, what do you mean when you say other departments are doing what?
The D C police. Yeah, the, the, the D C Police Department, you can sign up for Twitter alerts, um, when there are crime-related emergencies like that, like, you know, stay in your house or something like that. Alert Montgomery does not apply to police incidents.
Right.
Yeah, so, but, and, and this is where it comes down to infrastructure implementation. That's a totally different jurisdiction. And we all do some things that are similar and we all do some things that are different. And that would be one of them. So that's why this would be a larger conversation to try to figure out if this is something that they're willing to implement. I'm just not the person, I'm just a vessel to pass the message.
No, I know, I under, I understand that. I'm just making the point that I think that is a, an important follow-up conversation.
So the, the D C alerts, right, is it as, as high level as there is a active police investigation in your area, full stop? And that's it? It, it like, what is the, how, how specific?
I will, I will find some here.
Oh, okay. Um, I didn't know that.
I'm not familiar with this. Yeah, I'm not familiar with this system. I know we don't have that in Montgomery County where we give out or we send out alerts for active information like that.
Well, it may not necessarily need to be this like specific information as much as there is, there is something happening in your area. Uh, and, and, you know, kind of stay indoors, lock your doors, kind of, like, it doesn't even need to be potentially specific to what is exactly going on, but, Barney, were you alluding to something as high level like that?
I, exactly. I think, I think Steph's offered a very good example. Uh, I was, I was being very target or specific about the fact that we have our own town crier system. Could that be used here? But the broader tent is the one that Steph was referring to, which is just, is there a way electronically to get the message out quickly? That's the most general way to phrase it. Then what are the best channels that you could use to do that? And, and, you know, could the town be helpful? That's essentially the order in which I would take up the issues.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I understood it to be as well.
Because I, the, the town crier being an email is not an ideal way to alert people in the middle of the night.
Well, it still requires to go through a staff person. So if this thing happens at eleven-thirty on a Sunday night, right, we're still relying on the staff. None of us have access to the backend. And I don't think I, any of us want access to the backend to send something out. Uh, what I'm saying though, in lieu of that, like, why isn't there a Twitter alert system or something? For those who, who want to sign up for something like that. Many of us are not on social media, so I do want to say it solves some of the problems.
Except, except I have to say, Irene, there aren't too many ways other than social media to get that done. And they're not going to do a county-wide phone free, so.
Totally fine.
Can I, yeah, can I interject for one second? Um, if, if I may, uh, I think this is going to be, uh, a larger extended conversation. I, I just want to get back to, uh, if there's anything else specific that you wanted me to talk about in relation to, uh, crime or anything like that in the community or as a whole for the second district of Bethesda that you, you had specific, um, inquiries about?
No. Nope. I think we have had our questions answered. Thank you.
No, 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 you're very, you're very welcome. I just didn't want us to get too far and then it was still some lingering questions about something else. Um, I think that this is, uh, a, a good starting point to figure out how to do this. But again, and good points that were made, uh, social media is where we are when it comes down to these particular things. Uh, email is, is what we use as well. Uh, but there are going to be a certain method that's going to be chosen to use to have something like this happen. So I think on the backend, it's probably a larger discussion internally for you all as well as externally for us to figure it out. Um, if it's something that Um, if it's something that can be done. If you can send me, um, information about what the system is that you're currently using to notify your, uh, your, your neighborhood, I would appreciate that because that would be helpful in the conversation that I need to pass forward.
Okay. Uh, well, uh, our, our town manager will be able to provide that to you.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else for Officer Johnson? Thank you so much, Officer Johnson. We do appreciate your time this evening and, um, appreciate you fielding our, our general comments and questions. Um, I do look forward to, uh, uh, seeing those, those tips and then, uh, seeing what happens further with the discussions that, that kind of top-line communications for, for the police department. Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for having me and I appreciate the opportunity, but that's what I'm here for. I'm your community services officer. So if I don't have you, there's no me. So if you have any, uh, questions or anything like that, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service to the community and, uh, we, uh, wish you a good night.
All right. Thank you. You all have a good night and be safe. So happy holidays to you if I don't talk to you before that.
Thanksgiving. Yes, happy holidays.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Interesting discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I just, just to finish up my thing, I, I know there'd be a lot of issues to discuss about the protocol of being able to access our town crier system and how that might be done. All I just want is a discussion about it. I just don't want to not, not consider it. Uh, I fully respect the fact that, that it's a process right now. Of course, it's set up and no, it really comes through Todd, but maybe there are adjustments to be made. Maybe there are circumstances. I don't know. I just, I just think it's something to discuss because it is a tool. And, and the same thing with our town listserv for that matter. It's not ours, it's private, but that's also a tool. And, and I agree with you Irene, not everybody, I don't, I'm not on Twitter or X, I guess is what we have to say. Um, and, and, uh, but I, I and a lot of other people do look at town criers and, and listserv. So again, I'm just thinking in terms of there's a serious matter. How do you quickly notify a lot of residents? Have we explored whether or not any, the town systems can in any way be helpful? That's the, I'm not coming to any conclusion, but I just want us to review it.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, I hear what you're saying and I think it's a valid discussion. I am a little unclear as to the implementation, um, given small staff, given they're not 24/7. And at the end of the day, it would be very, anything that would be released in this manner would be extremely high level. And, you know, there is an incident-
And late, honestly. I mean, because as you say, staff's not working in the middle of the night. I mean, it would require a system where somebody from the police would have to call, like someone on staff would have to be able to answer a phone call in the middle of the night and get an email out. And I suppose you could set your email to alert your phone if you get one in the middle of the night. I would prefer not to set my phone to that. Whereas, I know you're not on, on X.
Yes.
But let me say, one of the advantages to X or Blue Sky or whatever you're going to use is that you can set just particular accounts to an alert. So if you're following Montgomery County Police, you can say that's the account I want to alert my phone if an alert comes out.
Sure, sure.
And that way you know in the middle of the night.
And I also do want to say this was one incident of how many years? You know, I, I, so I also don't want to boil the ocean, um, for say, if this was something that was occurring, God forbid, once every six months, I think there would be a different level of discussion, uh, potentially.
And, and you, you guys are absolutely right. There's gonna, whatever it is, it's going to be at a very high level. Because the police are not going to put out exactly what's happening in this situation because just as you get informed, so can the criminals get informed. So they're not going to put out specific details, which is what some of our residents want. But it's going to have to be at a very high level, like, you know, there's, there's an incident, please close your doors or something like that. But they're not going to put out specific information.
And then we're going to get complaints, why didn't you tell me what it was? I was scared to death, hide my babies, hide my guns.
Communication of significant incidents in the town.
Okay. Shall we move on to another very sexy topic of parking? Um, what I, uh, uh, as, as you may recall, back in September, uh, I had, uh, started thinking about the possibility of doing a, uh, an analysis, a study, uh, just kind of discussion, set of discussion points about having a better handle on our, uh, the cars that park in, in the town. There are certain sections of the town right now, certain streets, excuse me, that are permitted parking, um, for various reasons. And as we look at or, or, or discuss items such as multifamily housing, which may or may not actually come to fruition, a lot of the concerns have been around parking. Uh, but at this time, it's really difficult to understand what our capacity even is, uh, for parking. Everyone, uh, and in some cases, some streets, it's correct conclusion, the street, the particular street is narrow. We won't be able to have more parking. Right now, there's, there's more, there's less data-driven, um, conclusions and more kind of anecdotal situations. Um, I'd like to put forth for discussion the idea of a permitted parking system. Now, whether that is something that is town-wide, which I personally feel is important, um, or it's a zoned type of system, or a combination of, of their little bit of this, a little bit of that. Um, I think that having a system in place where we, where we are keeping track of the, um, cars that are being parked in, in the town, that they are residents who are parking their cars and their guests are parking in the town. I think we basically have more data on, uh, what is the current, uh, capacity, uh, versus, you know, what, what we have left as we consider the idea of multifamily housing. Um, it would allow for if everyone had a permit parking sticker, um, better enforcement of, of, of existing parking, uh, regulations. Uh, that way it makes it a little bit easier for the police. And the reason I'm bringing this up now is in September 2025, that's when this next round of parking permits will be issued because they're issued every two years. Uh, so the next round will be September 2025. Um, we'd be able to, because we, at least I live in a section where there are people who park and walk into Bethesda to either work or take the metro or whatever the case might be. I don't think I'm the only street, um, or, or section that has that issue. Uh, so that would get a handle on the, the commuters, if you will, um, that are coming in. As we think about Farm Women's Market, um, and its eventual development and what that impact might be, uh, where people would prefer to park on the street rather than go in underground garages, what that's going to look like in terms of the town, um, we would just be able to be more proactive if we, if we had a sense. Um, in general, I think there'd just be enhanced safety because then we'd have these designated parking areas, um, versus not. And then, uh, working through things like Corso and the Lotton Center here and Zimmerman Park, um, a little bit more tranquility, uh, as, you know, people know the rules and, and hopefully abide by them. So for all these reasons, I'd like to kind of talk about, uh, the idea of having the Public Services Committee take a look at, uh, what makes sense for this town, um, in terms of a, a permit parking system. So to that, I will put it out there for discussion. Go ahead, John.
Well, um, I'm all over it. Um, I, um, am very sympathetic to the people who live on the borders of the town, especially, uh, over by where the Bethesda, the Farm Women's Market, Park, it parks will be built. I'm concerned about, you know, in the interim while the construction's going on, workers who are working on that project, parking over there. Um, I think all of us see commuters who park near there and then they walk to the metro. A lot of commuters actually park here in this lot, um, which probably isn't allowed, but there's no ticketing. Um, and, you know, the more cut-through traffic that we have through here, I just think that, um, permitted parking, perhaps zoned parking, so you, you know, if you live on a street where, I live on Leland Street, there's a lot of people who park their cars on the street. Maybe they have more than one car per household, you know? It, there may be a case when you can't park right in front of your house, but you need to park at some point, you know, at one end of Leland or the other. Um, I think it is definitely warranted to look into something like that. It's going to be an issue when Corso construction begins as well. Um, and, uh, I'm concerned about commuters who may come from the other side of Connecticut Avenue, uh, who are, as you say, parking on our side and, uh, walking to Metro. Um, and I think, um, you know, we're, it, it, to some people, it may seem like we're imposing a regulation on something, but on the other hand, um, just for the, the tranquility, safety, um, and fairness for people, especially who live on the edges of town, um, where it's a lot busier. I think it's something we really need to seriously consider.
Thank you. Rich, Stephanie?
I, I actually have a question. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to this. Is there a, um, is there a limit to the number of permits per house that people can get?
Right now, you get two guest permits on top of the cars that you, um, that are registered to that address.
As long as the cars are registered to that address.
As long as the cars are registered, you get all the permits for that, but then you get two guest permits on top of that. I think it's two.
Yeah.
Yeah, two.
Okay.
It's one, one with the request for a second, then we will provide that. It's unlimited number of stickers, affixed permits to cars, whatever cars registered to that address will get. There's no limit to the number of cars of a specific address that it can get a permit. However, we offer one guest pass and we offer a second if upon request.
Got it. Just wondering, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of looking into this issue. I think it's something we're going to find we'd like to do with Elm Street Park opening and whatever happens with the attainable housing.
Yeah. Really, it's, uh, and, and to that point again, is, it's like, it, it serves us to have a baseline now that we're all still single-family to, to understand what, what is going on, like what, everyone says, hey, with multifamily housing, you won't need to have a car, right? Because you live so close and we understand that's not, may not be practical, but this will give us that baseline data if we know right now, like what's going on across the town.
Not to get off topic, but somewhat relatedly, the New York City Council approved, uh, a, uh, new zoning plan today, getting rid of single-family housing within New York City and also getting rid of any parking minimum, which is something that's on the table here too, so.
Rich?
Well, I, I, I like your idea of collecting data because without the data, we don't know what the extent. I, I'd hate to impose a, uh, a system when it's not needed.
Right.
Okay, so we need, we do need to collect the data. Um, you know, basic information, you know, how many parking spaces are there in the town? You know, you, you know, you just take the average width of a car and look at the streets and figure out how many spaces we have. Um, but, but it, I, it needs to be data-driven, not reactionary-driven. And so we, we do need to do that. And I think PSC's perfectly capable of suggesting a scope of what that should be.
Well, and actually, that data will be useful also for the, um, rezoning, exactly, for the, exactly.
Yeah, so, but you're asking for a different set of data, right? So you're saying, hey, what is our, what is current capacity, which is that linear feat, you know, you need access? But I want to understand how many cars are actually registered, which we can get through the DMV.
But let, let PSC come up with a scope of what that data should be so that we can make it some kind of reason, decision about what kind of parking permitting system should we have? What's the extent of it? Where should it be? All of those kinds of things, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll be happy to take this back to the PSC and ask them to look into it. Um, the, uh, my own two cents worth is I think the issue has been raised about the streets around the Bethesda Market, uh, 46th Street, uh, 45th, that run there. I think the idea of looking seriously at zoning makes a lot of sense. I can see that that's necessary, uh, to consider. I think, um, in respect to, like, but we ought to be very clear about what, what's being achieved by different incremental steps. Uh, for example, if the issue right now is that people in that part of town are parking who are construction workers and the answer is enforcement, they don't have permits and we should be therefore spending the additional money to make sure that people are not illegally parking, full stop. When we go to zoned parking, if that's what we were to do, we're basically saying the problem is not people outside of town. The problem is people in the town who have a parking permit and are using it to park in a very different neighborhood in the town. So just to be aware, that's, that's, that's the problem you're trying to solve with specific zoning. And I don't want to solve a problem that's non-existent. If, if there are three cars in the town that are parking on Elm or East or any of those streets, taking advantage of that, that's, that's not a reason to establish a whole system where you control parking in the town.
I agree.
Okay. The only way you're going to know that is, is with a lot, but I guess I have to look into what the cost is for trying to get that information. That's not easy. And then I think quite separate from the question of potentially going to zoning is whether we were to say that, uh, permanent parking was required everywhere in town as distinct from the system we have, which is block by block. People on that block feel that there are too many cars who, uh, park there that are not of the families who live there. They then request to have a permanent parking added and we've always been very willing to do that. I don't know of any time we haven't, we said no. But it still means that there are many blocks in town where apparently the residents have not felt that necessary and presumably feel that they're okay with the way the system is. So I also respect that. PSC should look at all those. I mean, that's exactly, yeah. But I'll conclude with, I said, I said, I'm happy to take this to the PSC and, and consider it all very fairly and thoroughly and, and report back.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments on that? Well, thank you for that. Uh, let's go on to the next, um, item, which is Bethesda Market Park. Um, I do have an update about Elm Street Park if you want me to debrief, but if you'd like to start with-
No, why don't you start with that?
Okay, um, so a kind of a little bit of tangent there. Last night there was a, a, an Elm Street Park online, um, webinar, Q and A, um, where, that, uh, unfortunately wasn't very well attended. There were only about 36 participants at its height. Um, and the rest were panelists, there were about 15 panelists on there. So not very, um, a bit lopsided. However, um, there was a, a full depiction of the upgraded park facilities at Elm Street Park, uh, where the, the, the connecting, um, Capitol Crescent Surface Trail, uh, would be placed that would eventually go to that ramp that goes, uh, up to the bridge and then connect into the existing, uh, bike path that's on Willow. Uh, so the nice plans that they have, uh, again, everything is still conceptual. They're looking for input. Um, a few of the, I, I marked about 11 different types of questions, um, that were brought about. One was about lighting. Um, then it was about tree protection, uh, making sure that there, there, there are some trees that are going to be taken down, uh, just because their species type, um, isn't great for this, this climate or it's not great for a park or something like that. Um, but yet, uh, being replaced accordingly. So it's not like they're going to be clear-cutting. There'll be two rain gardens as a part of the plan, just, just for your, um, general knowledge. The playground surface, um, so the, as you may recall that in the Bethesda Market Park, there were a lot of concerns about the use of artificial, like rubberized kind of, um, surface for the play areas, especially on Lot, uh, 24, no, Lot 10, excuse me. Um, and what the county is entertaining right now is to try a brand-new, um, cork-based surface. So it has not been used anywhere else in the, in the county, but they wanted something that would be durable. Um, yet, you know, kind of provide that, that, um, yeah, that, 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 you know, yeah, cushion. Of course, it comes in only one color, which is the cork color, um, but that's okay. It is what it is. And they're unclear because this, again, would be the first time. So, um, something for potentially that it'll be carried across to Bethesda Market Park as well, this kind of, so there, the, the county is looking into that, um, heavily, it's a stable source, uh, inclusive in terms of making sure people who are, um, needing, like physically needing that, um, uh, 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 type of surface, they, they can use the, the facilities accordingly. Um, and so there's a lot of comments about in, inclusive playground equipment. So this is not just, um, physical challenges, but also sensory, emotional, um, challenges as well, just to have equipment that aligns with all of that. There were questions about like the bicycle pedestrian collision risk, you know, if they're coming off of Elm Street Park. I'm sorry, Elm Street itself, like Wisconsin, where Tate is, we're going towards the the new Elm Street Park and that cross point as you're heading towards the new playground and and they're right there is their potential collision point in addition to the area if you're coming from Bethesda Market Park and you're trying to cross Willow just to make sure that all of that. So there were a couple of questions around that. The timing of Bethesda Market Park. There was a question about the connection to Pearl Street and and what that might look like. So I actually chimed in about that. There was a question about whether the one-way street configurations that are around the Bethesda Market, I'm sorry, the Elm Street Park Lot twenty four, Lot ten. And I said, no, we're not looking at changing the configuration of those one-way streets. Of course, once everything is put in and we have a better sense of the the traffic flow, it might be consideration in the future, but certainly not a part of this project. Questions about drinking fountains, the questions about redesigning Elm Street Parking. There's an anticipation that with all the activity taking place, would it be possible to convert? Now, this is on the Elm Street side, not our side of Elm Street, but on the other where it would be angled parking. And instead of so truth, yes, in truth, the park parks is not looking into that. But I think that's a good segue to get back in touch with Michael Paylor, Todd, which reminds me from your manager's report, when we had our meeting with Michael Paylor about Wisconsin Avenue and all the different things, we haven't heard back on on some questions that we had about that. So we could add the idea of this angled parking, you know, is that something to study, entertain? So if you're walking from Elm Street Park going towards Tate and the and that new preschool of Georgetown is on your left side. So right now it's it's just two rows, eliminate one and then have angled parking, which effectively would slow things down and also allow for you know, because there's there's a concern that between loading vehicles for, I'm sorry, the delivery vehicle for CVS, the various loading unloading that takes place with the school, it's become a real mess on that block in the in the mornings. I'm sorry. Yeah, so so. You're gonna be sorry for doing that. Yeah. Yeah. And then we still have the tripper bus going through, too. The tripper bus goes through. It goes to Leland, takes a left on Forty Sixth Street, takes a left on Willow and takes a right on the Forty Seventh. It doesn't even bother to go off Wisconsin on Willow anymore. So the tripper bus is also going our direction. So it's become a bit of a bottleneck there and take a look at it. So anyway, for Todd, we might want to follow up with Michael Paylor on on all these things. He's DOT, sorry.
Did we ever follow up with him? We did have some resident questions about the the traffic situation.
We did.
Right at that intersection now, which is just impossible.
Well, actually, what we talked about with him, and this is a month ago or so, maybe six weeks ago. I don't, everything's running together. We did speak with him at length about all of those red lights. So Bradley Lane all the way through to East West Highway or Montgomery, whatever, and talking about just the bottlenecks that occur. The pedestrian car conflicts that are that are right there. Obviously, it's a state road. So but we need to follow up and and figure that out. But certainly that section of Elm Street is his domain, if you will, to county. You know what I mean? Couple more things was lighting fixtures and then public art. So the space, the wall that is now being, it's like an enclosed area and some people have like lacrosse lessons in there and stuff like that, that will be cut out, you know, that whole space will be cut out, but maybe there could be a space for public art on that wall. So those were the general things that that happened there, but people seemed excited about it.
That's good. Let me just add one other aspect to it, which came out in the course of these discussions, which actually quite really good for the town, which is in light of the fact that they'll be eliminating that small basketball court there. When we talked to the Parks Department and also Dave's been involved talking to his counterpart in the in the operations, it turns out that in next summer, they will be rebuilding the basketball court here in this park and making it full size. And at the same time, they're going to refurbish and recondition both tennis courts. And we've asked them, following up on the discussion we had with the gentleman who came to our last council meeting, which led to some follow-on visits. We're also going to look into improving the drainage to make sure that that mud doesn't fall go onto the courts. So all that's going to be next summer as well. So that's going to be, that's going to be very good for the town. And does address one of the issues that some residents had about eliminating that small court over in the Elm Street Park that said they'll come right here to play. So on terms of the park itself, same old, same old, but maybe a little bit of progress. The turns out that the you recall from past discussions that they're were waiting for the county and the developers to make more progress. They've split their contract into two pieces. The piece that's most relevant in terms of really allowing the developers to kick off the site plan work preparation in a serious way is the reimbursement agreement. And that reimbursement agreement had been marked up by the developers. They had sent it over to the county. The county land, the real estate attorney working on it has left the department. A new gentleman has a person who's been appointed. However, the
Yes. They're dropping like flies. Yes.
And 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 well, it gets better. Anyway, so 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 the the but however, they have come up with their comments. They've passed them to the department, to Chris Conklin and his Department of Transportation. And the Jeremy Saunders, who's the person at DOT, who's specifically the overseer of this project, has told the developers that he will get them comments back by the end of this week, which I believe is tomorrow. So hopefully tomorrow, the developers will know whether there are any remaining issues or not in respect to the reimbursement agreement. One hopes that and apparent what I've been told is that all of this is simply in the particulars of how you document the expenditures, what's the timing of repayment, there's nothing, there's no issue of principal or so forth. So one hopes that they are indeed, this will allow further progress to be made and to close off that issue. The other agreement, the purchase and sale agreement for the land itself, which is no longer a critical path item, but nonetheless, we want to see that progress in that. That is actually back in the hands of the developers and they have to comment on that. The point that we have made is that it's good to get that negotiation completed, not again, going back to prior conversation, the state, the county does not want to execute that agreement, but everyone agrees it ought to be negotiated and everyone knows what it will say. And that's an agreement that we need to see so that we in turn can work with the developers on our agreement to pay for our portion of the garage of just over a million dollars. So in any event, that's where those agreements stand. The but I at this point, I guess my my guessing is that we'll probably get to the point of really launching the site plan work at the very end of this year, the PR in January effectively, which would therefore, if they are able to stick to their four-month requirement to do all that work, it would mean submitting the plan sometime at the end of April. And then that kicks off all the work with the planning with the planning department and the planning board. The only other thing to report was that per our past conversations, I have brought to the PSC, we had a very good meeting this past Monday, revealing all the traffic issues associated with the park and what would arise, and I think came up with some very good comments, putting them in an email and and when I've gotten understanding and agreement from the people at the committee and sign off, and I want to distribute that to everybody. But one thing I'll mention right now, which is pertinent to the discussion on Willow, but I thought it was a very good thought, which is recall that that the we want as much as possible to reduce the amount of vehicular traffic that would be allowed and on the strip of the Wood enough that goes between the the market when it's expanded in the new park, so that it is as much a pedestrian space as possible. So the committee took that on full board and said, look, we also ought to be thinking then of how we can encourage traffic going southbound on Wisconsin to turn left on Leland and get into the garage on Leland rather than turning left on Willow and then right into the garage, which is an entrance into the garage that would still be permitted. And to do that, they would they want to recommend that we in turn recommend to DOT, or actually it's to the state, that they put in a left turn signal at Leland.
Yes.
And also lift the four to six ban. So that anybody wants, once people know this, they'll say, oh, yeah, I could turn left on Willow, but then I got to fight the traffic on the Capitol Crescent Trail, and I got to turn right and go on the War enough and then go down under the building, or else I just go to the next light, turn left and the garage is right there. It's workable. That's right, right. And actually, there are things, there are thoughts there, too. You might left turn, but no U-turn, for example, because U-turns really slow everything. And there's a connected thought of putting in large markings like New York City does, don't block the box so that people can actually do these maneuvers and not find there's traffic from the other direction in the middle of the block. So in any event, that's all part of the thought that with Bethesda continuing to urbanize with more and more traffic, but we want to make it as easy as possible for people to access that garage from the side that will not disrupt the primary use of the park and the market for people who are on foot. So I thought that was an example of a very good thought that came out of the discussion with the community members.
A suggestion I might make for further consideration as you're involved in these discussions when it comes to traffic. And this is, I think this is something that is not in the near future, but once density really increases on this side of Wisconsin and you very possibly, especially during rush hour, have a lot more pedestrian traffic crossing Wisconsin, I think it might make sense to look at whether a human conducting traffic and, you know, coordinating traffic with pedestrians and everything would make sense during rush hour at some point. I'm just, I am foreseeing that that could be helpful. They
Police police those things?
Well, so like in downtown DC and like the Golden Triangle area, the businesses there hire
Crossing guards.
Crossing guards, basically.
Actually, right.
To and it's really as someone who drives through like the Connecticut K Street area a lot during rush hour at night, it is makes all the difference in the world when there are crossing guards there to coordinate people crossing versus cars turning right or turning left or whatever. When there's no one there, it gets a complete disaster. This is way in the future. So but I'm just playing it out there. I could if the Bethesda Urban Partnership were open to
In those cities somewhere in in different parts of the world, you have a person like and they're doing this.
It looks like you'd be very good at it.
It takes it takes a certain panache, Irene, you know, and I'm sure there's a Greek style here that is especially demonstrative. Okay, anyway, that's
No, that's great. I
Oh, and also we're very pleased that both Midi Figueroa and and Chris Conklin will be joining us at our table tomorrow at the Moco Breakfast.
Great. All right. Thanks for that. So the next is the County Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative. As you may know, there's been a couple of meetings. So the county executive held a meeting on Sunday afternoon at the BCC cafeteria, which was well attended and lots of different questions, but mostly an audience of that were very skeptical about these recommendations, as is the county executive as well. But there is a general sense of like, let's have these different communities across the county band together to understand more and also take take a step back here. The next day, was it the next day? No, Tuesday. The county exec, sorry, the county council met and and had a formal, if you will, presentation of the all the different comments that have been submitted or spoken through the listening sessions or submitted through the portal about the the recommendations themselves. It was just a presentation. There really wasn't much discussion amongst the council members as to next steps or kind of a process of any sort, no timeline. It was it was essentially after the presentation was was given, which was, as you, as everyone might have read, the representation of the people who submitted comments or asked questions appeared to be, you know, two thirds in opposition, a third and and in support of these recommendations. And that was basically a bunch of questions, very very little introspection in terms of the data that's being asked for and constantly consistently being like, how do we know that we can do this as a county? And can you show us that there was there wasn't any information about that? Then every single council member gave their their thoughts. And it was some level of we have a set of recommendations. We're not sure if these are the right recommendations, but something needs to be done because the status quo is not going to work any longer. So very little idea about what the the next steps might be, but just just for a friendly reminder, in the first, during the first week of December, the council presidency changes. Likely will be what is now Vice Counsel Vice President Kate Stewart. She will likely be the next council president. And she herself definitely feels that there is a need to do something that the dynamics have changed in terms of not only the cost of housing, but where that funding might come from, where previous generations could rely on family to help out or or whatever. That isn't really something that most people, most of the population in the county can count on. So that was a perspective that that she was taking and I was trying to listen in. So I don't know what the next steps will be. I I think that that a lot remains to be seen. I would, I will say that when if we work backwards, the county council starts working on budget items in in March. So if there is something to be introduced, it would have to be in the next couple of months that we would know, and then they would take a break for all the budget negotiations. Maybe they pick it up in the summer. Maybe not, you know, whatever. So I don't know what the timeline is at all, nor the scope of, if anything, that they would go after. So unfortunately, not much not much help with that. Yeah, I thought that that would be more for the municipal regulatory authority, but okay.
I do have one comment, and I can't remember whether it was in the, I know it wasn't in the presentation, but it was in the staff report. And at the end, at the very end of it, I think they mentioned that of the two thirds, the number that was in favor or opposed to the idea of eliminating the single family zone that ninety percent of them were from the area code two oh eight one five, ours area code. Or or zip code, excuse me, or not area. And I find that very troubling that that, you know, you that that really skewed the staff report to make it sound like, you know, all those affluent people are the ones who are opposing it and everybody else is 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 outside of that area are the ones who are in favor of it. So I just, I found that particularly disturbing because it was in the staff report and I just wanted to
Well, another way to look at it is these listening sessions were held all over the county. If there was, you know, there was a listening session close to just about everybody that was going to be impacted with these recommendations. For various reasons, the one that was held at Bethesda Chevy Chase, and then I don't know where they counted the one that was virtual because over a thousand people signed up for that, which was far more than I understood the people that were at the BCC listening session. And I'm not sure how that was, you know what I mean?
You know, the report, the staff report is reported in clearly in that way.
They, they, they're setting up an argument that's that affluent community, those affluent communities, that these independent zones are closing and the rest of the county is compared that way. And I, I just find that particularly disturbing, the staff report.
Okay. Any other comments? The next topic was
I'll make one, one comment about it. I, I was quite impressed actually with that staff report. I mean, I thought they actually took the, putting together a roster of those comments very seriously. They did not jump it over and I thought that was good. Yeah, but I, I was impressed that they really put in the effort to really analyze and then show it off.
True. The next topic is a technical amendment to state law. So for those listening online, the, there, there are two tiers, if you will, of municipalities in Montgomery County. One tier of municipalities have since grandfathered the ability to zone the land that is in within that municipality. And that was because it had been done from the early forties and, and in the 1950s, when all of this was organized through MNCPC. I'm sorry. Yeah, MNCPC, right? Is that right? The, that, that those that had been exercising that kind of land use authority, meaning like stores go here, homes go here. You know, commercial, whatever goes there, that that was grandfathered in. And those that were not exercising that authority or everything was residential were, had limited authority. We are in that other category along with 11 others in the, in the Montgomery County that have the authority to regulate buildings in terms of all the different height setbacks and, and far and water drainage and tree canopy and fencing and, you know, all this kind of stuff. However, the way the state law is currently fashioned, it's, it's specific to single family zoning because up until recently, that was all that existed here, right? So now that these discussions are occurring, and again, we don't know exactly what direction this is going in. There, there is a need to clarify the intent of that law. And the intent, as we understand from the state, was, or state attorney general was to, to regulate buildings. You didn't, you didn't necessarily want a situation where you're driving down a municipality and you find out that, that the municipality can control that bill, that building or that home and that home, but not this home and that home, right? Because it's a different style. It's multi-family instead of single family. So this technical amendment is clarifying that the intent that all residential buildings would be able to be regulated by a municipality. That technical amendment has been introduced and what it states is that regulation over all residential buildings, right? So we're not talking about if something changes to commercial or retail or something like that. And that a municipality is unable to pass more restrictive ordinances if, if that building is a multifamily building. But if they want to, they can pass something that is less restrictive. So as we've been having our discussions at, at the council level and, and with residents, if a size of the building is, is X, whether it has one front door, two, three front doors, it's still the same sized building that respects the height setbacks and everything else around it that we regulate today. And therefore, if there, if it is a multi, in, in the future, whenever that might occur, if it is a multifamily building, we wouldn't necessarily pass an ordinance that would be just applicable to multifamilies. It would be applicable to all these residences throughout a municipality. However, there may be municipalities out there who, and town councils in, in boards in the future that might want to pass legislations or ordinances that says, you know what? Because it's a multifamily building, instead of the height being at this level will allow you to go higher. Okay. So what? That, that's, it's not for everybody. So we introduced that so that it would be politically palatable for the state delegates to pass this. Cause as you know, the state last term or earlier this year got through governors, Governor Moore passed the Housing Expansion Affordability Act to introduce more missing middle multifamily housing in, in different areas, spaces and areas of the count, of the state. So where that's it now, it has been introduced as a bill. We have been having meetings with other municipalities, the other municipalities within Montgomery County to talk about this amendment, make sure that we're all on the same page. And because it's starting to get super, super complicated in terms of land use law and, you know, what does that all mean? And those of us that can listen in on sessions may not really understand it because we're not law lawyers. We have, some of us, including the town of Chevy Chase, have, based on last month's discussion, have hired land use council to help assist us to answer these questions of, you know, how attainable housing, how does that reflect what we're talking about here? Of course, with the state law, how's that impact as the state technical amendment works its way through the process in Annapolis? How can we be kept abreast of what's, what's happening and, and the legal, kind of legal eagles looking at this? Because a comma can make all the difference. You know, we want to make sure that, that everything is, is transparent in that regard. So there are four municipalities at the moment that have signed on of the, of the 12 that have signed on to this land use council, because we'd be sharing the costs. Others are likely to come in, but I'm not sure how many. And anyway, yes. So, so we're, we've signed on to that retainer agreement, I believe was kind of signed on today, earlier today. And well, we're, the idea is to, to stay informed of all this. And it's really legal research, best practices, keeping us informed of all these different meetings and, and providing, you know, kind of counsel in that regard. That, that's the extent of, of what we're looking at. So that's where we're at. I am still trying to gather support statements for this technical amendment. There is a hearing that will take place when, when Montgomery, the Montgomery County State delegation is ready to put forth its local bills. They actually have these hearings when it's a package, let's say it's 10 bills. I don't know how many. It'll either be on December 10th, I'm sorry, 9th or December 16th. Now, one is in person, December 9th, and, and one is virtual, December 16th. But I don't know which one our technical amendment is going to be a part of so that we can round up everyone to, to get that. There, there is a delegate who is in another district who has some concerns about the height. So what has come back is maybe municipalities shouldn't be allowed to regulate for height, you know, kind of thing. And, and you know, would that, would, would the height limitation that we have in place, or not we, but all these different municipalities have in place, is that gonna ipso facto like create a, a, a barrier for multifamily housing? So there is a concern from one delegate about that. It's unclear, you know, we're hoping to have these discussions in advance so that, you know, everyone is assuaged. The same kind of comment has been brought up by Director Sartori, Director of the Planning Department, who is specifically thinking about the AHOM component of the Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative. But it's, we're, we're, we're dancing a little bit because the AHOM has not been defined, you know, in terms of what it is. But yet the idea that there's a concern that municipalities would kind of shut it down. So I, I feel there's, you know, an opportunity here. Let's start with what's in front of us. And then if there's another technical amendment down the road that needs to be specific for AHOM, once the county figures out what that's going to be, so be it. You know what I mean? But so there's a little dance around that. But we're working through it and we're trying to get support statements from different bodies. And maybe it'll all come together. So we're trying our best. So any questions or thoughts?
Thank you very much Irene for your really good work on this. This is a lot of work to coordinate with 11 other communities and lawyers. And you're doing good. Thank you.
See what happens. All right. Anything else on that? Okay. The last bit is on the Bethesda Downtown Minor Master Plan Amendment. So thank you all. We, I, I sent out an original draft and Todd and Barney, thank you for your comments on that. And then the land, the Long Range Planning Committee and Joy, they also turned in comments after I sent in my, my last thing, which I really appreciate. They were, they were really, really good comments. The, there's two sticking points though. So Barney, you wanted a particular order in terms of your concern. And the LRPC and Joy have the other, the other order. What is, what is more important? Yes. So, and, and there's a bit more language with the LRPC comments about, like, just goes into a few more details and things like that. And I'm over six minutes because of it. But what I needed to understand today is what is the order that I need to, to go with? And, and once I have that in mind and I can go back and pare it down so it's less than six minutes and then send out, because this, this isn't due until the 27th of. So we are in good shape. I don't want to give you, I did this on purpose so that there would be this further ventilation. We are all on the same page about the points. It's the order of the points and the fact that it's just gone over six, six minutes. So that, if that helps. So what I just needed to understand today is what is more important in terms of the order? And so if you guys want to give your, your
What are the two, are, are the two points highlighted?
The data and then what we're asked. So, so there's the, you know, we asked the planning department to do one, two and three. And then the other consideration is, boy, you guys don't have any data that makes it. So the way that the, so Barney wanted the, the first point about the data and then the secondary point about the ask. Whereas
My point was to have the ask of having the periodic reviews first. That's my point.
No, the one, two, three, the, the Hold on. Correct. The three. I'm, I'm cumulatively calling that one point, meaning the ask is one point and the fact that there isn't data is another point. So they're two. Exactly.
And the second concern is with respect to eliminating the development cap is that many of the reports assertions lack that. So those are the two.
Yeah. And, and the way, the way it is drafted right now, I think it's fine.
No, that isn't the way the LRPC was saying.
So, yeah. So the committee feels that the ask, so in the original draft, the ask is actually at the end. So you, she's ending the testimony saying, you know, we owe these three things. The committee feels that we should ask that upfront and that we have two points. The first point is that the, the recommendation presents inadequate information to justify a removal of the cap. And then the second point is, and so this is up for council discussion. The committee does not believe that we should say, if the cap is removed, the committee feels that we should say, we don't agree with the removal of the cap. And irrespective of its removal, we need to put this framework in place to assess at various points how well the actual development is performing against the plan. So that, and then following that are all of the, you know, the data points. The, the, the metrics. So because, because the original test, the testimony that Irene sent around yesterday started, well, if the cap is removed, then
Yeah, yeah.
But we do not think that we should concede that the development, I mean, that's, that's at least our feeling. The council has to agree on whether we want to say that or not.
This is between, let me try to find some common ground.
Please.
I think, I think the, the, the common ground actually is that the first concern is not having the reviews because the, if you keep a cap, the reason for keeping a cap is to force subsequent reviews. That's, that's why you have the cap. It requires this, this review. So I think there's, there are a couple of issues, but if we, if we agree that, that the periodic reviews are really crucial, then the question is how is that framed as part of the first message? And there are two ways to frame it. One is to say, we don't want the cap removed. And then I think you'd have to say, however, if it is removed, we still must have these periodic reviews. And maybe I'm going further than the committee on this. My own personal view was they've already basically decided not to have any, to, to get rid of the cap. And so the most that we can obtain is the periodic reviews. So my view had been that, that let's bear down on what we think we can get. I was concerned that if we said, we do not want that cap removed, then that's just going to, the whole testimony is going to be thrown out. Now, maybe that's more defensive than we should be. I, that's something that we call five can discuss. But that had been my thinking about it. But in regardless of how it is presented, I think, and this is what I think is the common ground, the importance of that periodic review with recommendations coming out about how to modify the plan stands as the most important thing. We want the planning board to, to, to accept from, from our perspective. And then the question is how, and then, then the point is there's a lot of data that has to be collected in order to make these periodic reviews sensible. And, and here are the, here's examples of the data. Okay. So I, I, I hope, does that make sense that there was in that order?
And, and we agree. And actually, but we put that at, at the end.
But which it is?
So basically what you just said, so where we say, we don't agree with the removal of the cap. Regardless of whether it's removed or not, we need to have a, a substantive framework where we can assess performance against this plan over the life of the plan. And here are the metrics that we would suggest. So we don't actually, there was no content that we removed.
No, there was.
At all. We just added, and again, you know, I, I recall at some point when I testified before the planning board myself about a thousand years ago, that, you know, maybe there's written testimony and then there's testimony that you could deliver. You could take out the additional points that we added. And the additional points that we added were really regarding, you know, some of the shortcomings of the recommendation. And that really just amplified some of the questions that you and Irene had already asked. Like, for example, you, we've built all of these bike lanes. Is anybody measuring their use? Like that kind of stuff. So we added some more. Those could be removed, you know, again, if you're trying to submit written and, and your oral testimony and you have it be equal, have, have the, you know.
Or read it. So that's the other.
Okay. So that, so that's the point you're trying to get in within the six minutes, you know, that's fine. I think, you know, our point was, you know, you've made this recommendation to remove the cap based on a report which is inadequate and which does not provide the evidence that would support removal of such a cap. And then second of all, we recommend that there be an, you know, a formal assessment framework, regardless of whether you actually remove the cap. So we don't come out in the front saying, don't remove the cap. It's second. So I guess it's
Okay. Let me just follow up though, if I can, just to make sure I crystal clear my mind. In, in the position of the committee, if, if the, if the planning board were to say, well, tough, we're going to remove the cap. Does the committee suggest that we, in this testimony, say, well, even if you remove the cap, we still want to have periodic reviews?
Yeah. It says, while we do not support the removal of the development cap, irrespective of its removal, we recommend implementing periodic data-driven holistic reviews of irrespective of its removal, we recommend implementing periodic data-driven holistic reviews of the development impact that include opportunities for community input.
Okay.
And that's, so that is your language.
Right, okay, okay. And and where does that sit in your?
At the page two.
Oh, I see, I see. So after then, so you were first saying, don't lift the cap.
No, 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 we don't start out saying, don't lift the cap. We start out saying, you've recommended this and you've presented inadequate evidence in support of it.
So they threw the data.
Yes.
Or did you add at the end, front rather than?
That's right. So it says, if I could, like the key paragraphs here, our two primary first around it, our two primary concerns are that the report company, the MMPA, the report fails to provide both the substantive foundation for its recommendation to lift the development cap and a mechanism to conduct ongoing evaluations of the performance of the plan as amended. Then it goes into, we urge the planning board to ask the planning department to blah, blah, blah. Our primary concern with respect to eliminating the development cap, this is further on down, is that many of the report's assertions lack data and concrete strategies to meet important goals. And then there's examples, examples, examples. While we do, and then later on, page two, while we do not support the removal of the development cap irrespective of its removal, we recommend implementing periodic data-driven holistic reviews of development impact that include opportunities for community input. And then down further, these periodic reviews based on updated data will permit, after we define all that, will permit the formulation of adaptive and responsive development policies. So it's just, it was a different approach and that's where I was like, we're gonna.
No, it's good for us to discuss. I think about to hear from other members of the council, which is your preference.
Which is the most important? You, you start out by saying, you're right, your recommendation to remove the cap isn't supported by adapt, adapt. So you open with that and then say, well, irrespective of whether or not you, you were, you did it right by moving it down and you're going to remove the cap. We still didn't want periodic reviews, or you say, we think that there's a fundamental flaw in the whole approach, which is there is no reviews to begin with the benchmarks that you've set. And to me, that's the most.
Yeah, I mean, if I were writing it as a brief, I would do it that way.
Yeah.
Which way? Which way?
I would.
You would start out by saying, there's a fundamental flaw.
There's a fundamental flaw.
That absolutely has to be fixed. And then say, even besides that, here are the other problems.
Yeah.
Like.
And you, you think that, as I understand you, Barney, you think one of the fundamental flaws is is that there isn't these periodic reviews of the.
Right.
Right, that to me is the cornerstone of it, yeah. Right, that's where.
I agree. You would open with the, okay.
Yeah.
Joey?
I think we're talking about two sides of the same coin. So the, because the committee felt that the the recommendation, well, yeah, there was an absence of a framework, but the committee felt that that whatever evidence that was presented that justifies removal of the cap is substandard. So and and then and then.
It's true. They've been saying that from the beginning.
And, yeah. And that, you know, compounding that fact is there isn't even a framework, you know, a, a, a comprehensive framework to assess performance against this plan. And so, yeah, therefore, that's what should be in place. I mean, at the end of the day, if the council feels, I mean.
Yeah, we agree with the points. Yeah, that's all it is. It's just the order.
It's the order.
And I, I do want to mention that the the, the recommendations were poor where there was like a whole list of, of that is not part of the testimony, but is part of the, of the, that, that the committee greatly expanded that where they broke it out. You're not going to see it in your version.
So it's more than this one?
Oh, it's a heck of a lot more and it I'm just saying that's, they, they want specific ideas we were giving specific, but it's not going to be read by me. But yet it will be included in the testimony to show. So I just wanted to give that, it was very detailed set of suggestions is my point.
How much do you want to inflame me? I mean, are you, are you, are you saying, do you want to say at the beginning, you know, the methodology that you've used in the past to create these caps is crap because you didn't ever collect data to support it? I mean, do you want to start out by saying it? I mean, that's essentially what you're saying.
I'm going with the flow here.
I, I wouldn't start with that myself.
These are comments from our residents who have been studying this issue. So I, I do want to be mindful of that.
Well, I don't think you're discounting them.
Nope, nope, it's just the order.
Question of how you're presenting.
It's just the order, yeah. And again, I, I'm over six minutes, so I have to, which I can, I can keep the sentiment, but.
I think you've got all the sentiments in there.
So. No, but I still need the order.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying, it should be a fairly low stress proposition to just figure out how to order it.
Oh, yes, yes. Well, and well, let me ask, you know, in the larger context of you know, whatever else we may have before the planning board, I don't know what that is. What difference does it make? Whether, you know, you, whether you put the thing up front, whether you say, we don't, we, we don't agree with the lifting of the cap. You know, is there some information that we, the committee, don't know that you know, that we were willing to concede upfront if the cap is, I mean, I think that that I think the committee feels really strongly about that.
I, I'm okay with that.
So because the, 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 the version that Irene sent around yesterday said, if the cap is removed, yeah, we should do this and the other thing. And to us, that made it sound as if we're just making a concession that, okay, we know you're going to remove the cap.
Yeah, that's basically true.
But do we need to go on the record? That's my question.
Okay, I, I, my, my sense is, first of all, I think just to be clear, I think that if, if the bulk of the initial testimony, upfront part of the testimony is all about data and how much more data is needed, that we will lose a lot of the audience. I don't know if they'll feel hostile, but we'll just lose them. And, and, and we, and then we'll finally get to what we really want, which are periodic reviews. It will be seen as secondary and not as crucial. So I do think, and this, I think in the spirit of what both Rich and Steph are saying is that let's lead with what we care about most to get out of this. And I feel very strongly about these periodic reviews and, and, and reviews with recommendations. And I think there's at least some chance that they will see the value of that and will agree to it. And we'll look to the issue of what, what data has to be collected is almost a subsequent conversation. Yep, we get it. It has to be data. We'll have to talk about that, but we understand your main point. We can't just go forth for the next 20 years and never look again at what's going to happen in downtown Bethesda.
Correct.
So I mean, to me, this is kind of what you're saying was, could you not say, you know, we recommend that many periodic data-driven holistic reviews, including the application of that before the cap, the cap is removed. So you just put at the end, you know, your analogy then that you well, that you don't like, but you say that it's imperative that these reviews take place.
I guess, let me, let me offer, let me offer a thought in trying to find, okay, which is to say that, that the, we either prefer to have to have it is not to eliminate the cap, we'd be, we'd entertain a discussion of increasing the cap, which would still require reviews. In other words, you would say, here's an additional amount. However, if that's something that the board is not going to consider, we nonetheless want to make the point that these periodic reviews need to be need to be held even if there's no cap. At least that that hardens our position a little bit, if that's part of the concern of the committee. Because we're saying our preference would be to maintain a cap, even if you move it. But if you decide to eliminate the cap, still keep the reviews. That follows and then still the discussion, the metrics would be at the, at the back end. I don't know.
I, I think you modify that first sentence, your bolded first sentence to make it something that would satisfy the concern that we're not objecting to. I just don't, I think our point is you must have some kind of review of your process of your metrics. Period, a method.
Right, right.
So, you know, and, and if the way we phrase it now is if the cap is removed, I would not say, I would say, we recommend that at least that this data and holistic review process be in place before you lift the cap. That's all I.
Uh huh, I see where you're heading. That's helpful. That's, that's very helpful. Those you're saying, you're saying, saying, we want these reviews before you lift this cap, put in place the mechanism for periodic reviews.
And by the way, here's what it should be, this is what constitutes an actual.
Here's why we should have these periodic reviews and then here are the metrics. That's, 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 you hit on, I like that.
That's not that sway just concerning.
Well, it moves in that direction of saying the cap. You can't, don't eliminate this cap unless you have a serious replacement that really gives us comfort.
There should be a, you know, formal assessment framework.
Right, right.
Okay, I think I've got it.
At least for tonight.
At least, I will, I will turn around another copy tomorrow afternoon, Friday afternoon. It is due Wednesday noon, 27th.
All right.
That way you'll have the weekend, take a look at it, we'll do another if you could let me know by Monday and that way should get this cleaned up by Tuesday and then turn it in because it's new. I will go in person, it's the Monday after Thanksgiving at five o'clock, so I'll go there. But, okay, you'll get a, you'll get another version tomorrow afternoon. We're good.
Good, good.
All right, thank you for all of that. I think we are good unless anybody has any other business or concerns or questions or thoughts or. I wish you all a great Thanksgiving. I wish you all in here a great Thanksgiving and those online in, in the room. And.
Jessica, thank you for hanging in there. We're very impressed.
No kidding. Thank you. And, and with that, we are adjourned.